Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, December seventeenth. And with us today, Don Schwenker, and then Flego, myself, Mike Stein, so your county supervisors. Lisa is our county auditor. Bjorn is not with us today. Luann is back here watching over us. And Mary and Brittany are here for the media. First on our agenda today is Jayden Chekel, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning, Jayden.
Good morning. First, just would like to mention a big thanks to Secondary Roads Department for over the weekend with all the ice that we encountered. Because ice is a whole different animal as compared to snow, but they were out all weekend doing what they could. So I just wanted to give my thanks to them for doing what I know is their job, but still doing take care of roads for everybody.
And pass our appreciation on also.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't get a lot of, I didn't hear a lot of reports of people going in the
Uh, I had five calls, I think, but most of them were repeats and
And, and I would just remind the public that our snow and ice removal policy is on our webpage on the county website. That states, I mean, everything, even as far as the hours that we are not out on roads because we're not like the DOT who's out twenty-four seven. So it's on our website, just people are curious what our policy is. It's on our webpage and available for people to view. So.
And, and another point is, you know, it is a weather advisory and you're advised to stay home unless you need to go out. And they did predict this ice storm four days ago.
And to be, to be a lot worse than what it was.
In advance, and it could have been a lot worse. And honestly, the other side of it is not really safe on ice or a thirty ton dump truck either, or a big
So our guys got to get to their shops when the roads are untouched. Nobody's on until we are. So our guys have to travel just as much as anybody. So I just wanted to give my thanks and appreciation to them for this.
So please, just be patient.
Uh, first is fiscal year twenty-five, the raise grant application for Iron Bridge. So first part of that is a twenty-eight E agreement. That is a twenty-eight E agreement between us as Jackson County and the Iowa County Engineers Association, who is working with the consultant writing the grant and all that. So we are basically, we are in agreement with the Iowa County Engineers Association is, if you want to call it the we are partnering with them on this raise application, raise grant application. So this twenty-eight E agreement is just stating that.
I know we've done that before, you know, with other counties on bigger projects. It seems like we have a little better chance that way. Is that?
Yeah. So this was from last year, you know, we're replaying again, but we had a briefing oh, handful of months ago on what we, our first application scored well and not so well on. So we, they, we were identified areas on where we could improve. And that's where the second round, hopefully we make it to the next round after that, knowing there that we have to improve on. But again, we figured we, it's worth going after, given the amount of cost at Iron Bridge, the cost of the place, you know, uh, this would be a huge
Is there a number connected to that grant?
Uh, with our, so with the six counties, I mean, they're all river bridges, all six counties that ours for Iron Bridge, our cost estimate that we submitted was like five point six million dollars. The grant wouldn't cover all of that, but it would cover a very large portion. I don't know what that amount actually is, but uh, it probably depends on what, how we proceed through the next steps and how they award projects.
On top of the two million.
Correct. So this, yeah, this would be on top of the two million dollars we already received. So
Nice.
You know, if we receive this, it would, I like to believe it'd be very little financial commitment on our bridge money for that bridge. It'll be huge.
That would be awesome. Any other contacts we can make?
Um, I wish, but it's up to the feds. So yeah, this twenty-eight agreement is just between the county and the Iowa County Engineers Association.
So first you need a motion or action on to, to approve the grant application.
The twenty-eight E agreement.
Twenty-eight E agreement.
Which is allowing basically Iowa County Engineers Association.
Okay. So your first point on here is for action on the raise grant application. Your second one is corporation agreement. So am I reading that wrong?
Uh, well, the first one is the raise grant, but there's two parts
Okay.
To that. This is part number one.
A.
Part A of one.
I'll second that.
I have motion and a second to approve the twenty-eight E corporation cooperative agreement as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, part B of one is they like to see a resolution for a letter of support from the county, AKA the board. Basically stating for their support for the raise grant project. So all, all others, remaining five counties also have the same thing. So it's really a formality, but it's something the feds like to see because if they, there isn't board support, probably I don't have a good chance of moving forward in the next round if there's no support.
Really support.
So that's resolution number ten eighty-eight dash twelve dash seventeen dash twenty twenty-four.
And pick that motion to approve the letter of support.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution number ten eighty-eight dash twelve dash seventeen dash twenty twenty-four as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
I'd also like to remind the public, I worked with Bjorn last week, there's a public survey out on the homepage of the county website for anybody that travels Iron Bridge or uses that bridge or road in any way, shape or form to give their input or feedback, like it's a questionnaire. I sent it out in a mass email too, to the rest of courthouse, but uh, just a questionnaire of if you use the bridge, what don't you like about it? If you use it, what would you like to see? All that, like just a public survey because that was one area in our first round that we kind of, not just us, but the whole application itself kind of lacked on was public involvement. So.
So I did talk to you about that and I, um, I apologize. Was there a deadline to that survey?
Uh, I think January sixth.
So I kind of skimmed over, I'll go back and take that, but I also question the fact that, um, at one time Don brought up maybe some um, access in there for canoes, kayaks, da, da, da. So I don't know if we could get a special letter from like conservation or, um, users, maybe.
Issue there was we didn't own the land though.
If we have, yeah, but that's, that's neither here nor beyond. First we
Well, we would incorporate any, yeah. I, so I did send that. So what you're referring to is the basically the a separate letter of support, which is goes to the public, like emergency, the schools, ag businesses, whatever you do for their support. Uh, the survey is just for, I mean, anybody, uh, the public, anybody from the public.
So my point was to people that participated in that event that come from miles.
Oh, they could, they come from the, I think it was five states were represented in the last
As far as that, yeah.
That could go out too.
So yeah, that, it's right on our homepage of our website Bjorn has up and I was going to give, work with him to get a, I think there's a QR code that can be associated with it too. People want to just take with their phone, but if they're at a computer, it's real easy, but.
Put that bullet point way Mary that we need people to take that survey and support.
There you go.
Okay.
Well, and that, well, it is important to Jackson County. I mean, it's, it's a huge funding.
That would be something we could reach out to like the Chamber of Commerce, Macocata Valley, and Preston and stuff to kind of have them spread there. They can disseminate that news out.
What's that going for?
City council. I think January sixth or ninth, something like that. Um, so.
I seen the email, but I did not read the
I was gonna say, I was wondering about something going in the utility.
Yeah, it's, it takes like less than five minutes. But it's just one area that all counties would be kind of lacked on last application. So they like to see more public involvement. So this is an effort to help.
I knew about it on Jeff's talk, I would have mentioned it. There you go. Uh, when did you send that email?
It's probably last week because they just had finalized last week. So that's all for Iron Bridge stuff for today. Next up is the entrance permit, uh, just a, this one's real simple. It's a field entrance for Aaron Costello on South Gary Owen Road, Butler Township, section thirty-six. No issues. It doesn't require a culvert. It's at the high spot in the ditch. Um, it has sight distance both ways. So pretty straightforward. So we recommend approval.
I'm moved.
Thank you. Motion and a second to approve the entrance, field entrance permit for Aaron Costello, Butler Township, section thirty-six as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Can I ask a question quickly? So we passed the resolution ten eighty-eight. And then do you need motion for chair signature on the letter? Because there are two separate issues. There's the resolution, but there's also the letter.
Um, I guess to cover all ends.
So because Luann and I talked about this, they're two separate issues. So I, my question is just, do we need a motion for the chair signature and the letter of support for the rebuilding? The raise grant application for the Iron Bridge on Iron Bridge Road or the Macocata River? Do we need a resol, do we need a motion to pass that? So he has the authority to sign.
So let's just do that.
Okay.
Can't hurt.
Something probably.
I have motion and a second to approve the signature and approval, uh, on the raise grant application as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks, Lisa.
Well, no, because now you have a motion, you have a very public motion to say we support this.
Okay. Uh, last but not least is a uh, county five-year program revision for the current fiscal year that we're in, which, so this is for the Bellevue twenty-five fifty-five bridge, which also known as the, what we always call the Z fifteen bridge on three hundred and sixty-second avenue between Bellevue and Springbrook.
Two sixty-seven.
Three sixty-second. Yeah. Um, so when it was originally programmed, it was programmed at seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I mean, when this was programmed, it was programmed five years ago. Well, costs have gone up since then. And for example, the bridge that would go in for this project, we have check plans completed and already submitted to the DOT, but it would be a hundred and ten foot slab bridge. I mean, other than the skew, it's identical to what would be, or what's that, one hundred eighty-fourth right now. And for reference, you know, that, so that same size bridge on a gravel road would cost six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So with this being on a paved road, there's guardrails required, paved approaches, pavement's got to come out, pavement's got to go back in, what have you. So, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars isn't realistic. Uh, our estimate right now is nine hundred and ten thousand dollars for that bridge. So what this resolution does is just to revise it to allow more of our federal aid dollars to be put towards that project. So nothing with local budget at all. It just comes out of our bridge fund, but in order for it to go to letting, your estimated cost can't be, has to be within fifteen percent of your estimated or programmed cost. Well, we're exceeding that. So we have to bump up it. So it's included in the STIP. And all that. So it's a formality, but it's just basically this resolution is allowing us to take a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of our DOT bridge allocation fund added to that project. So it can continue towards letting. So again, no local budget.
Well, you're basically, you're just adding a hundred and sixty thousand to the res, uh, revision to the five-year road plan, which was five years.
Yes. Well, it's done every year, but the first program.
Again.
And you know, we could, with this project too, we can't wait until, uh, we have our upcoming five-year program because at that time it'll be too late because we'll have final plans already submitted to the DOT at that time. Because say if this bridge was planned for fiscal year twenty-six, well, we just wait until the five-year program this winter. But that's not the case of this, required the resolution. Currently it's on track for a May letting. Um, and I've talked to the DOT, given the project location works out on a paved route and the extensive what the work would entail. I'm going to request when final plans get turned in that we have a late start date of like March of twenty-six because the May letting contracts likely won't get signed until sometime in early to mid-June. Contractors already right now have a lot of their work scheduled. So, but long story short, the earliest this project really construction could start the earliest is July, and I don't even think that's realistic. And it's with all the work that's got to occur, it'd be a big push to try to, for that to even be completed before winter. And I do not want that bridge closed over winter. So.
So I see stakes and flags out there already. Is that just survey stuff or that not going to stay until twenty-six or?
So yeah, that's, we stake the right of way for, um, Macocata Valley for them to, for them to relocate their electric and for brush cutting to occur there. But, um, so yes, this project likely, I do not foresee actually starting construction until spring of next year, which is fine. But I just do not want that road closed over winter.
Yep.
But that's what this resolution does, is just allowing a hundred and sixty thousand more of our federal aid bridge fund to be allocated to this original program and all. It's expensive bridge, but what is it?
So that is resolution ten eighty-seven dash twelve dash seventeen dash twenty twenty-four.
I'm moved.
I do.
So I have a motion and a second to approve resolution to approve revision number one to the secondary road department, five-year road pram, road program, resolution ten eighty-seven dash twelve dash seventeen dash twenty twenty-four as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Same sign. Motion carried.
I think that's all I have. Construction, as mentioned last week, it's all wrapped up. Yeah. Don't have anything else, I guess.
I guess I see, uh, your, uh, secondary road guys are, are cleaning up right of ways and, and doing some brush cleaning. I appreciate that very much. And I think, uh, um, county residents appreciate that too, just for vision, um, whether it be critters coming out of the it gives a little more, uh, room to see something and to, for overhang. I see there's a lot of trees overhanging and I appreciate them in this kind of weather.
You want some daylight in there. It makes the world of difference.
Yeah, we lucked out. We avoided quite a bit of the ice of what they were otherwise forecasting. That would have made it much worse for any limbs overhanging. Realize that heavy ice makes tree branches fall. So we lucked out, wasn't as much as what they were originally calling for. But yes, all these efforts help improve roadway safety. And our guys have requested us to go stake some right of way in some areas. That way they know where they can or can't clear in some of the paved routes. So, uh.
Is that a time consuming, uh, prior issue as far as staking right of ways or is that pretty simple? If you find?
It's pretty simple. So.
What do we have to find? Do we have to find pegs somewhere or do we have to disrender from the center of?
If they're out there, we would find, which region we buy right of way, there's either pins that were set or as part of acquisition pins were set. So you can either find those if they're still there. Otherwise it's yet kind of going off the right or center line of the road. But all of our old plans and we have folders through projects of what the right of way acquisition plaits all were sold. Or we have the plaits. So we're able to recreate that fairly easily.
Well, pass on our, uh, greetings for their holiday. Good, safe and happy holiday. Hope that they're not out, uh, running the roads on Christmas and Christmas Eve and whatnot. So.
Yeah, it seems like the weather should be very
Happy, happy holidays. So.
So you have the resolution. I'm gonna figure what I should even, you guys have already in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you?
Yep. Have a good holiday. If we don't see you, yep, have a good Christmas and New Year. All right. Are there any visitors or citizens, uh, before us today that would like to approach the board? Seeing or hearing none will move along and joining us today is Ruth, our Jackson County Veterans Affair Administrator. Good morning, Ruth. Is that your, just your coffee or we have that?
Yeah, these are just mine. I can give you coffees.
Nope, you're good.
Um, we currently have four hundred and eighteen veterans and their families in our, in Jackson County um, that are receiving a total of seven hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Um, in that's disability compensation, that's your survivor's pensions, um, those monetary benefits. Uh, we currently have per month right now. Yes. So that amount changes every month slightly. It's, it hasn't been a huge variation lately, um, but it does change slightly every month as we have claims decided or, you know, veterans that have dependents, if their dependents fall off their claims, then we have a slight change as well. So.
I guess I haven't divided that up, but just, it, to me, that sounds like a nice number. I, I just, I, I say that every time you come in, but I appreciate, you know, of course, everything they did and, and services that they made and.
And we did recently receive the, um, I don't have this in my notes, but we received the GDX report, which is includes, um, healthcare benefits that the veterans receive as well for fiscal year twenty-three. Um, so next month, like I can talk about that, um, for you as well. So you have those numbers too. Uh, we have sixty-six open claims right now awaiting decision at the VA level and twelve decisions were made this month.
Really good?
Yeah, yeah. So we're, we're making some headway there as well. And we will be having monthly trainings from the Iowa Association of County Veteran Services. So we're, Jackson County is a member of that, that group. And they started doing monthly trainings, which have been very beneficial. Um, the, the training this month was on the M twenty-one, um, understanding and using that resource. So the M twenty-one is the manual that details the policies and the procedures for Veterans Benefits Administration staff. Um, it helps the VA adjudicator, so the raiders, the people that we send this into, um, it helps them to review and rate VA disability claims. Um, it was very informative training. I knew it existed, but I didn't know where to find it. Um, and so that was very helpful to have somebody point out, this is where it is, and this is how you use it in your goal. Um, I believe that we will be able to use that M twenty-one more effectively when helping our veterans. So basically if we get a claim back and it has been denied and we look through it and we can say, well, wait a minute, if we go to the M twenty-one, you didn't use this, you didn't follow this procedure. We can print out that M twenty-one page and we can submit it when we appeal. So it is helpful. It's good to know how to use it and how to search it and the changes, there's a button you can look at, but the changes that have been recently made. So there's a lot of different ways that we can use that. Um, takes a little bit of time to learn, but I've been reading through some of it and trying to wrap my head around how we can use it better in our office. Um, we are also working diligently on getting information out to our veterans. Um, I went up to Macocata Sentinel Press and asked them if I can write a column once a month, just giving information to our veterans about things that are happening. You know, in our office, changes with the VA, what we do, because sometimes people get a little confused. You know, we're not federal employees, but sometimes it may feel like we are because we're submitting these claims. Um, so sometimes that can be a little bit of confusion. So my goal is to write an article once a month, just to get some information out, things that veterans should know.
Appreciate that.
Might be of interest. So, um, huge thanks to Macocata Sentinel Press, obviously for allowing me to do that. Um, we are also hosting a winter party tomorrow, kind of an impromptu, hey, stop by our office, come see us. Um, we're going to have cookies and popcorn and some holiday music and just, you know, veterans want to stop in and say hi and grab a cookie and ask us some questions and yeah, something fun. Um, so that'll be from nine to one tomorrow. And then, um, I did drive to Des Moines last month and I got my PIV card. So I have my access to the, um, the federal system. Um, I currently have accreditations with, um, NAC, VSO and the DAV. And I have my applications for accreditation in for the American Legion and the VFW. So once I have those, I'll have a lot more access to, um, help our veterans in our community. So, yeah.
Nice.
That's all I have.
Well, we sure appreciate you keeping up with the changes that keep are ongoing, I'm sure.
Yes.
Um, just a note, with the cooler weather last week, I did see some Veterans Affair stocking hats out in the hall.
There you go.
I noticed them too. I thought that was nice. I did see them.
Uh, they're nice little, uh, they're just nice warm little.
Yeah, I know. I did see some on the street, honestly. Yeah. I did stop by the American Legion too, just to make sure.
We'll keep up the good work. I like hearing the different things and getting more, more word out to the veterans. I like that.
Yeah, there's just so many little pieces and they all play together. And so it's like, how do you make that work?
I did see some of them t-shirts at the American Legion too. I didn't go over to the table. Are, are they for the, just people to take? Are they for sale or?
They're for the veterans. Veterans should just take them. Yeah. It's part of what we, um, we sometimes use our state allocation money to purchase. That's something we can use our state allocation money to purchase and then we can give them out to veterans. So that's why we got the funding for the hats too. Let's do the state allocation funds. So, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much. Well, happy holidays to yours, to you and your staff and they say.
Like reaching out to all the different areas.
We're trying.
Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth. All right. Lisa?
I can yield if.
Um, who do we, who do we got? I'm sorry, is there?
Do you want to speak or are you just listening?
I'm, I'm trying to understand exactly how I put a proposal in.
I'm sorry, would you please just approach the board and state your name and?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Lucinda Schwenger. And I'm representing, uh, some of the groups that are utilizing the senior center. And we acknowledge the fact that we need to help in any way we can to find a new LESE, if I understood that from the last meeting.
Um, I, I don't know that we're looking for a new LESE. We have, we have to, there's still more conversation to have add with NEI three A as far as what they're going to continue. They intend to continue services. And I don't know what that all extends to. I mean, we got an email yesterday again. Um, uh, if we, and we discussed with the senior citizens board, we had a work session last week with them. So, I mean, we also, yeah, we also are looking for partners, if you will, um, to move along and keep programs moving. And we should like to see that thing active down there. Um, which also goes along with that and which you've heard about, of course, is insurance issues that we need to figure out and key situations that we need to figure out. Where they're all at or what we're going to, how we move forward, you know, so, um, we certainly would like to see the programs continue, whether it be sewing, whether it be card playing, whether it be dancing or exercise or whatever it may be. So.
Well, it's not necessarily a LESE, but just kind of funding and stuff like that, partners.
Partners. Yeah. Okay. So I have a group of three ladies and we would like to put together a sales proposal to take out to other partners and we're willing to do the light work to do that.
Okay.
And we don't understand who do we talk to about what monies does it take to keep that building operating? And I just want to learn who to meet with and how.
I'm not sure we have that number put together yet, what it takes, but we kind of know, um, what the expenses are. I'd say for, um, insurance, electricity, that's obviously easy enough to attain. Um, and maintenance, we've been, our maintenance person has been going down. So I guess, um.
Depending on, to me, depending on what you're looking to do, um, I think at this point, maybe the, the, the senior board would be a good point of contact. Because we're probably going to assign resp, I don't know. It looks like we'll probably end up paying the bills, paying the freight, so to speak. But the, we don't want to manage the center, you know, and that's what the senior board can do.
Okay.
And cooperation with them as far as insurances and, and fees and all that kind of stuff. Um, we're still in the, in the green about how that's all going to work. So.
That's fine.
Yeah.
And we would like to submit our insurance and we want to know who to submit that to.
I think that's been done already.
From my Niki from our end, because they were.
I received a certificate of insurance from Kathy Cundy. So I assume that that's from the senior center board.
Okay.
But yours, is yours from the senior center or is yours from the quilters?
Mine is from the quilters. So I would, do I just send it to you?
Send it, send it to the, yeah, either bring it into the auditor's office or, um, I can share my email address, but I've received.
Oh, so what do you? We're town, we're town and country quilters and we have a insurance that covers us. So we do all kinds of things in the community.
And then I'd like to visit with you about that.
So that basically more of a sublease over the overall package with the board?
Yesterday I received the insurance requirements from NEI three A. Uh huh. So now we've got NEI three A, we've got the senior center board and we have the quilters. Should something happen.
One of the quilters. There's two groups, correct?
They're all one group now because we, we want to do an umbrella. They're all one group now because we we want to do an umbrella insurance for everybody.
Gotcha, cool.
Okay, so that would be. That's a very good insurance question, when something happens. So I did submit last week, what came out of the meeting last week, is I did send an incident report. To Kathy Cundy and said, because you're really gonna have to be very specific when something happens. What time it was and why were they there and. So I guess that's my main thing is I'm thinking that when you have three insurance companies within the building.
So I guess we'll have to work with our provider, your provider, and and we'll have to sort this out, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, just so we're covered, you're covered, yeah.
And so I would, I would go back to the Senior Center Board and I would either develop your own incident report or. Or use the one that I supply, but that way, should something happen, you know who's gonna, whose insurance is gonna pay. Does that make sense?
Just so we're covered anyway, yeah.
We're covered at this point. The the two insurances that I've received, I have forwarded them on to our insurance agent and I've received word back that. They're good limits. So we'll do the same thing with what you have. I'll send it to our agent. They'll look at it to make sure that the limits are correct. So I will do that.
Ours is a million dollars.
And what else?
Okay, so.
What else? Million one, million two?
Million.
For.
But there's, there's two different.
Right, it's. Okay. Yeah, so that's why we need to take a look at it. So if you have it, if you have a certificate of insurance. Um we can take it over to the office, we can make a copy or just have them send it to me, whatever.
They were gonna send it to you.
Okay, if they would do that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can do that. That's all I got.
Please understand that, y- you know, our maintenance guy is limited at this point right now at at time, uh but. We need to figure out a key situation to where we know where they're at, who has them. Um apparently, there's a lot of keys out there to that building and they come and go as they please and and we have to somewhat limit. Access, you know, whether it be inclement weather or whatever it may be, so we can limit ourselves to liabilities.
I respect that. I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, appreciate it. And good luck. Yeah, I appreciate you guys' interest and and moving forward with it.
Going.
Thanks, Lucinda. Have a good holiday. All right, Lisa?
Uh this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the December tenth, twenty twenty-four board proceedings and work session as written by auditors sent and authorized publication in official newspapers.
So moved.
Second, motion and second to approve the minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty-four board proceedings and work session. Publication and in the official newspapers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of three hundred ninety-four thousand thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the claims for three hundred ninety-four dollars, thirteen dollars, three hundred ninety-four thousand thirteen dollars and. Forty-nine cents as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
I need a motion to accept place on file for the Veterans Affairs Commission Meeting Minutes for the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
A motion and a second to place on file the Veterans uh. First Commission Meetings for November thirteenth of twenty twenty-four. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
I need a motion to approve resolution number ten eighty-nine dash twelve dash Dunkey dash twenty twenty-four. Setting the twenty twenty-five holiday schedule for county employees.
So moved.
Very good.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution ten eighty-nine dash twelve dash seventeen dash twenty twenty-four. Approving the holiday schedule as presented. All those in favor, say aye. I oppose, same sign. Motion carried and we wish them a very happy holiday and hope that they've been happy.
One follow-up question on uh the Fair Board. With the insurance payment, did they ever get a final tally of what their premium's gonna be? And when are we gonna? Cover that or?
I have had no, um that question hasn't been, I guess, answered to me yet. Are we still going to pay? The portion of the buildings and to the Fair Board?
That was my assumption, that's that's kinda what I got that.
Didn't really know if you were gonna do that or if you were gonna give them an allocation that was.
Well, we're gonna give them an allocation.
So I didn't know if the allocation included. The insurance.
So I if I heard right last, during the work session, whatever's easiest for you.
Well, that's the question is, do you give them a yearly allocation that includes the insurance or is the allocation excluding the insurance?
E- either way, I I mean, it's gonna come out the same either way, so whatever works easier or better for your books and and is it or for them.
I thought.
I I thought we were gonna increase our, we we allocated twenty-five thousand dollars.
Of which that second.
Right, that that got paid. But we also were planning on taking over the insurance because it's easier to kinda leave it as is and we.
Allocate.
Allocate, increase our allocation to cover the buildings or our or the land, sorry, the land, our portion.
I think the last estimate was fifty thousand eight hundred, I think.
And let them ensure.
And I was gonna pay. The Fair Board.
Okay.
That was the last, because that's what I had.
Yeah.
You had said that would make it cleaner for auditor.
Right.
Yeah.
When the, I guess, when does that need to transpire? Because right now, I, you know.
I will call Terry and I will work on that.
Okay.
Um, yeah, because I just wanted to make sure. I wasn't really sure what the board's wishes were, but.
Right.
Now that it's clarified.
They know they haven't gotten anything yet, which is crazy.
So we do?
Yes.
In about two weeks.
Yeah, so I will, I will get with Terry.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll end. I guess the other question then in the same realm is, what about the lease? You know, those changes that were suggested last week. I don't, I didn't do anything with it. I. So I didn't know if anybody.
See, that's what we need to talk about because. Again, as when we talk about, I'm, I I think I'm more in favor of just here's this much and. You know, we're out.
No, but the leases spell out. Yeah, so like we do all their other leases and I and I assumed that they were work, the board was working on that, but no.
The actual, the lease, I mean, John, he's.
Yeah, John, yeah.
So but has, but based on some of the discussion from last week, I guess, did anybody tell John to include? Um you know, the the maintenance, do you agree to the, you know, less than ten and ten to thirty and?
See, before we can send it to John, we need to have a work session and decide what we're, which out, which which ones we can go.
Yeah, so I, there again, I did nothing because I wasn't really sure. You know.
We can tackle that in the first meeting of next year.
And and we can, and so, you know, as I see it, as long as the church is paid, we can still move forward like we are.
Yes.
I mean, not like we're kicking a can, but it it.
And we won't make any more payments now till uh two or Thursday, January second. So this was the last claims period of this calendar year. So I can't pay until January second. So that gives us a couple of weeks. Yeah.
This will help cover that and then.
Yes.
We can subset, you know.
So I will.
Well, we need to amend anything for that?
Well, we'll have to look and see where we're at.
Okay.
Um and just as a final note here for me today, um I just wanna notify the board and all of the citizens of Jackson County. Specifically those that are in uh the townships of Makoka, Monmouth and South Fork Townships and all of the city of Makoka. With Governor Reynolds uh making the announcement yesterday and. Um swearing in of Chris Canoyer, State Senator Chris Canoyer, as the Lieutenant Governor. That will trip a special election. Um there's two tentative dates in January. This is a very quick turnaround. This is a an election that is called by the governor. This is one reason why I have budgeted for a special election in my budget, so we're covered. Um but this is a very fast-paced election and um. You know, I may have to bring some reserves in depending on.
Did I read that? It could be within a couple of weeks. Did I read that?
Um the the dates that I was told of yesterday, when I received the call from the Secretary of State's Office, was either January fourteenth or twenty-first. The governor uh and her staff are looking at potential dates and how to do this, you know. Efficiently, but you have to allow people to have nomination, to file their nomination papers and allow county auditors to to get ballots made and. Um so there's a lot of work and a fast amount of time here, so um. Just everybody be patient with us, but if you have that desire to run for that position.
You're talking about filling Chris Canoyer's position.
Chris Canoyer's position, now trips a special election.
Right.
And those people, whoever has that desire, they would have to get those nomination papers. Through uh the Secretary of State's Office, not through the county auditor.
So what's the deadline again, counties nominations?
Well, we don't have that yet.
There was an article in the T H this morning that was.
Well, because the date hasn't been set, so once you set the date, then you work backwards, so unless that date's been set and I don't know. I I looked at my emails here shortly and nothing's been, I haven't been received, but just a heads up for those citizens that are wanting to run for that position.
They do have a Secretary of State's.
Secretary of State. No, that's correct. That is, that is a position that is filled in uh nomination papers or filed in Des Moines.
But only, the only people who will vote aren't her. Her, is it her?
So it's part of. So, yeah, that's correct. Yes, it's not all of Jackson County that will vote, just those that are in this district, which are those three townships. And all of the city of Makoka, including the cities of Malvin and Monmouth, yes. So those three townships and those three cities. So Merry Christmas. Love it.
Appreciate that.
Uh that's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you, and you and your family have a good holiday season also.
Thank you.
Luann?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Calendar for the next couple of weeks. Um back o'clock this afternoon, there's a conservation board meeting at Hurstville for any of you that wanna attend that. Tomorrow, December eighteenth, um at eleven thirty is the annual DMAT and RPA meeting with Stu Anderson. Interview for by Zoom and that's actually for any of you who know that Don and Dan are on the RPA, but Mike can also attend that if he wants to. This is an annual meeting. Thursday, December nineteenth at six P M is a Limestone Bluffs R C and D meeting um by Zoom for Don. Um and we move ahead to um Tuesday, December twenty-fourth and Wednesday, December twenty-fifth. The entire courthouse will be closed those two days for the Christmas holiday. And then on Thursday, December twenty-sixth, uh the courthouse in general will be open, but the court and the state offices will be closed. And um I will also be out that day. Then we move ahead to Tuesday, December thirty-first and Wednesday, January first, and the courthouse is closed those two days as well for the New Year's holiday. So our next regular meeting will not be until Thursday, January second, twenty twenty-five. That's all I have for you, unless you have questions about that.
Okay, we appreciate that. And again, we all wish you and you and your family a happy holidays and and the season and. Hope to see you again.
Thank you.
Uh Lynne, is Jack coming? You don't?
He is, but um probably not here yet because we're on at ten o'clock.
Yeah, so um any other boards or commissions that anybody would like to report about at this time? I'm good. We'll take a short recess. Yeah, we will reconvene at this time and we're joined Jack Willie and Lynne Burkett, our Jackson County Disability. Uh Coordinator of Disability Services. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And as I hear and read, we didn't get the news that you wanted, but.
You certainly didn't.
No. So for the ASO, the Iowa Primary Care Association has been named. Um so we did not get that as we had hoped. So we're not sure what was in their RFP, what it's gonna look like, how they plan to implement and carry on with services.
Is this an organization that's been around for a while or is this like a new one, somebody formed to?
No, it's been in existence.
They're based out of Des Moines. They are doing statewide, but they've got a footprint throughout Iowa. Um I'm not, I haven't met any of these folks yet or had a chance to talk to them. I do know that. Um there's a listening session this Thursday from twelve to twelve-thirty. Just to kinda give an introduction of who they are and hopefully they'll kinda give us um the basis of. What they're looking to do and how we're gonna move forward with services.
And can you tell me where their closest footprint is located to us?
I'm not sure where, who all is associated with them. I I'm not familiar with theirs.
We have no idea. At this point.
It seems like at least this data is being consistent now, just doing things that nobody's prepared for.
Pretty much.
Just.
A lot.
I'm a drinker. I drink to that.
And you know, at least they're being consistent in that aspect. It's the fact that. Um even if you go to information sessions, everything they tell you isn't what they're gonna do, or at least that's the way it seems in this aspect.
So we'll see what happens um with that meeting. Um we're gonna have lots of meetings. I know Lori, Elam. Um they've got a meeting also Thursday with all the CFOs um. With HHS, so hopefully they'll get some answers to as to, because we're gonna have to coordinate and work with them in order to make sure services. Are bridged together and that we don't have any gaps. Um so there, there's a lot of work to do, a lot of things to figure out. And we, I don't have answers at this point.
I don't think anybody does.
Yeah.
And if it goes like seven judicial, then it'll take a while.
No, but I didn't read the article too that was published and and as uh I kinda read it that the employees and whatnot will have to almost reapply. As I, did I read that correctly?
Yesterday when we talked, um Lori says they really don't know what any of the employees' future is.
And I guess we knew that a year ago, but. Six months ago, whatever.
So yes, so everything's kind of up in the air. I'm not sure how um who they're gonna hire, who they're gonna want. Um where the locations are gonna be. Um all good questions. We don't have the answers. I'm sure they have a plan outlined. We're just not aware of what that is at this point in time.
So our region is as large as Des Moines' region is, so.
We have the biggest region.
We have the largest region out there, so um.
Over a million people.
Yeah, so obviously, I I we have to have some consideration over here, I would think.
Correct. So a- and there's gonna be a presence. That was one of the big things is that uh whomever. Uh applied for the districts had to prove that they had connections and that they did um. Um have things that they could do. I know that they've uh in the paper, it looked like they worked with Foundation Two. Um who they do provide uh crisis management services for our area. So yeah, we we just don't have a lot of answers right now as far as that.
So May's in the same position that.
Correct, oh absolutely, yeah.
Unknown, yeah.
All of the regions. Now, um they are also applying for the DAP. Uh that RFP is due this Friday and uh they went ahead and they're applying statewide. May and Lori did for that one. That's a much smaller piece of the puzzle. Um it's the um disability access point. And then they're gonna, so they'll apply for that, but the, we won't have an answer as to whether or not they get that until February twenty-first. So we've got a couple more months to see on that one and even with that one, it'll be. A lot less than what we're currently doing because that's a smaller piece of the puzzle.
It was not um a very enjoyable meeting yesterday.
No, and to be honest, I've been hearing that for eight years. I've been here, so. Uh, yeah.
I'd be very polite. If they're gonna have a statewide leadership, why did they bother to divide the state into regions?
Because of how they could make it look like they.
So the regions come long before this.
The districts, there's been regions previously, then they changed the 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 format of the districts. And then they hired a state organization over all the districts, regions. Is that right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, at least I got that part correct.
So again, I guess there's there's cr- uh questions that we can't, we can't answer at this point, so, you know, until we get. Until we get, if if it's Garcia or whoever it might be, give us an answer. Somebody could give us an answer somewhere.
Well, one of the big surprises we had yesterday is we received a letter from Unity Point Robert Young Center. Terminating their regional mental health crisis service agreement. And they wanted it to be canceled uh the middle of January. We're hoping we can extend that a little and.
Uh according to the contract, they have to give ninety days, so uh if if we're not able to get things uh put in place. Then it'll be the um March fourteenth date, I believe.
But so is there reasoning behind that also?
Yes, so uh they were, they are gonna be the. Yes, so uh they were, they are gonna be the C C B H C. Uh, Robert Young is, and uh that's supposed to start July one. And their staff that they currently have are gonna be transitioning to that. But the the thing is, is with everything going on with A S O, they have staff dropping. Because they're worried about whether or not they're gonna have a job, uh so they're looking elsewhere, they're applying elsewhere and they're losing staff. So they want to go ahead and um Stop our contract and go ahead and start the hiring process for the C C B H C piece of it.
Can you tell me what that acronym stands for?
Um, do you remember?
Community Based Health.
Based healthcare.
Must be, must be healthcare.
Okay.
So they're gonna be providing mental health services uh starting in July one and through this grant. And so they have staff leaving and their justification was that they needed to go ahead and Severtize with the region since we're gonna be gone and start that process so that they stop the bleed of losing staff. Was what their rationale was, so what that means for us, what we're understanding is that like our Uh coresponders, our care coordinators, the folks who work for Robert Young and provide that direct care, will continue to do so. But it'll be funded through the Robert Young instead of the region, so then at least that service will continue. However, there are contracts with other agencies that we would then have to rewrite and Do in order to continue on with those agencies that Robert Young currently oversees and then we would absorb that and Take that on.
So like your telehealth, would that stay with Robert Young or would that come to the region?
I believe, that's a good question, I'm not sure what all the pieces are, because I would imagine Um, that's a contract that Robert Young has, it's not provided by Robert Young's staff, so that's.
The ride along and and so too, didn't you? Are we still looking at a gap from mid-January till July first? I mean, that's the gap we're looking at?
So at March, I don't.
Or March, you said they had to provide till March.
They had to provide.
From March fourteenth to Ju- July first.
For the uh places that we do have contracts with, that they have contracts through for us, we have to get contracts put in place for those. The coresponders, the care coordinators, Robert Young is gonna foot that bill until July one. Because July one, when the C C V H C starts, they were gonna be providing these services anyways. It's a lot to to comprehend and um understand.
So according to Ken Beck, the chairman of the board, we're gonna probably be having several meetings uh to discuss the future.
Yeah, I I would absolutely think you would, but but what do we discuss if we don't know what the future is, that's.
Well, and what you, what they tell you it is, obviously they've proven that they can turn around the next month and say that ain't what it is, so. Kind of swimming upstream for a long time here.
Well, I assume that we're still gonna have services and that it's gotta be in their plan somehow to provide services. I mean, honestly, they just ain't giving up here, so.
At this point, we don't know who's gonna coordinate those services.
Right, well, yes.
And how you go afford. And how you're going to afford them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just a few questions until we get to the July new year.
We were a little amazed when when Lori said yesterday that there was gonna be a teleconference meeting. And it it's a half hour long, you know, what can you really get accomplished in a half hour? Not much.
Well. I think what's gonna come to them, if it's like the some judicial one is, they're gonna come on and they're gonna just Down the thing, that's like what it is, and you don't really get to ask any questions, this is how it is.
Well, we just need to know what it's gonna be, that's the main thing.
With them telling you exactly what it's gonna be, they're just gonna give you little bullet points and Which is a scary thought.
Right, and the biggest concern is making sure that we, we don't have these gaps in services that we provide for these folks and that they aren't left. You know, and then as this transition happens, that nobody gets left behind or falls through the cracks. It's, it, so there's gonna be um a lot for us to figure out, a lot of work for us to do, um, but we'll do the best that we can with what we're given.
Uh, I guess on be, on behalf of the board, we sure appreciate if you are Doing what you're doing and hanging on and participating in in the unknowns that you don't know. Don't get, don't run away yet.
Not yet, no, no, I, it's, it's been great working for you guys, so I hope to continue to do so, so.
They did say at our meeting yesterday that um uh They are going to have an election of officers and stuff in January that will run through uh July first or June thirtieth. And so um uh that's gonna happen and the board's gonna cons- consider off functioning Until that time and then we're not sure what's gonna be after July first, because they have specifically spelled out Who can be a member of the board, the new governing board, so that we don't know exactly what that's makeup is going to be.
All we can do is is move along and do the best we can and and, you know, put our best foot forward and hope for the best, I guess.
I guess my comment to that would be, that's what we've always.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I I I I guess I'm, I'm not really happy that the state government doesn't think that we're doing our job. And we are, and um I I was really disappointed when our region didn't get to be in an A S O. Cause even Lori says, I don't know if I'll have a job.
That right.
I mean. No, that's not follow the same guidelines, but again, when they did this with the other board I sat on, they basically kept The employees they had, but as people, if there was vacant spots, they didn't fill them. As people retired, they didn't fill them. Whether that will be the same ballpark they follow, I don't know, but.
Well, obviously, we still need some type of services, so they can't be just doing it without individuals.
And that was the key point yesterday, is our biggest concern isn't all of these changes, it's how our people are gonna be served. And if they will be continuing to get the service that they need. And being it, we've been assured that that will probably happen.
I mean, substance abuse and mental health is is getting worse, so it's not like it's getting better, so obviously, we have to have some type of service.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, everybody knows that and they know it at that level too, whatever level they're on, they're, it surrounds everybody, so it's, it's like it's here, so. There there is some common, I hope there's some common sense involved, yes.
I haven't seen any. We're watching for it, but, I mean, it was a a a really, really um tense meeting yesterday.
It was.
Everybody was Kind of.
And it's hard to stay upbeat and drive forward when you don't know the direction you're going.
You know, and the main thing is We have done everything in our power to provide the necessary services. We have a huge children's services that we've, that we've coordinated and developed, and who knows what's gonna happen? I mean, that's the scary part.
Well, that was a big push a couple of years ago, was the children's services and 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 uh it takes X amount of time to implement that. And then we try to sustain it, but now we don't know what we're sustaining, so.
And I think we're the only county that does have somebody in every school district.
Correct.
So we hope that puts us a foot forward too, that we are complying, and we are on a level of Care and service that's above and beyond, if you will.
So we will keep you informed as we get more information, um.
You told me the same thing every time, Jen.
All we can do is. I wish there was more we could tell you.
Oh, Lynn used to say, stay tuned. Appreciate it though, we appreciate your services and and that you're sticking with it and.
Someday it'll make sense.
It will.
It has to be some logic involved here, you know.
Let's hope.
Well, we sure appreciate it. And you guys and your family have a happy holiday season and safe and Enjoy, enjoy and don't worry about any of that stuff.
Dream on.
It'll be on our minds.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, any other business before the board this morning?
Thank you.
I would just like to say, we want to thank Mary Hayward. Uh, Mary has informed us that this is her last meeting. She's not gonna come and give us any grief anymore, so we expect We expect a large amount of volunteer work From Mary in the future, but we sure appreciate you coming and uh At least here, uh oh, the lights went on for. So no, we really do appreciate what you've done for us and uh, you know, you've, you've never really thrown us under the bus to the point that we can't survive, so um.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity for for you folks for putting up with me and also for the, we're hoping to send a press, I mean, they're, they're obviously awesome. But I would also, if I give a, took it a minute, which apparently I do, is to say, I'm encouraged really the citizens of the county to appreciate All you do, all the county, all the, all the county employees do, and to take advantage of A YouTube channel and watch these meetings, cause they're not as bad as people think.
Sometimes that can be a little entertaining. We we appreciate what you do and we sure expect to see a lot of Brittany too, and we're happy for her and uh.
You got big shoes to fill, Brittany.
So are you just not coming to our meeting or are you done with the Sentinel Press?
We'll see, I I, this is for sure done, so we'll see, I don't mind writing, deadline's good, well, I think the word is relentless.
There's always a paper next week.
There's always a paper next week.
We do appreciate it and we certainly wish you and your families both a, a happy holiday season and a safe holiday season.
Have a blessed holiday.
We'll see you somewhere on the road.
See you around.
Okay.
Brittany, we're gonna give you the rest of the year off.
Thank you very much. Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned, thank you all and say the, have a safe and happy holiday season.